It's being five o'clock. I'll call the s- the September third, twenty nineteen uh meet uh meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen to order. And item number one is uh policy potential or the developing of a policy for the community room and the new police station. And um Allie and Tim were good enough to come up with some questions for us to uh consider in this. So I'll open it up for some discussion on if anyone see anything they wanna add or uh what we'll comment on as we try to develop the policy.
Um no, I think we can start formulating like ideas around like the first one, who can use the community room. I mean, at first I would thought it was just gonna be like in-house. Are we thinking like Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, all of that?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. That's.
Or are we thinking that they would still use here and we would use that space for our meetings?
Um okay, yes, that's that's what s- some of the discussion is probably putting together, right?
Alright, well, I mean that that would be one of that would be a concern sort of.
Yeah.
You know, Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts, although great organizations and very well maintained and developed and, you know, um structured, is that the pro- i- is that the proper place for them?
Right. When when I w- I would say our first uh priority would be that it's for the emergency management.
Oh, absolutely, above above anything else, yeah.
Uh so s- yeah, so so like that has to go at the top.
Mm-hmm.
Uh what I I believe in the same thing, if like if we let organizations use the room, um you know, we have the issue of, okay, say the planning board needs to have a hearing on a subdivision and oh, we can't do it that night because that's used by some outside organization. I think that we have to deal with that.
So what if what if we do, because we still have time, but but not but I think it's something to be proactive about.
On the uh.
Yeah.
It's kinda six months, six seven months.
What if the first year, w- but what if the first year, we just keep it in-house, see how it works out, see how the scheduling goes, and then maybe the second year kinda look to, you know, um to other organizations. I mean, we don't know how it's gonna work and the cleaning part of it, like Tim brought out, like scheduling,
Mm-hmm.
is that gonna fall on like Carlton's shoulders, is it gonna fall on town administrator's shoulders, both?
Who actually is in control of that room? Would that be Carlton or would that be town hall?
Well, that's that's another question. That's part of the question, that's that's why I the.
That's part of the question.
I think. Wouldn't that be the first question to answer?
Well, e- exact to the point, well, to my point, okay, the police station is basically, it's under the uh oh charge of the Chief of Police, but is this something that we want to burden the Chief of Police with, uh, you know, scheduling? No, I I don't think so.
I don't think so, yeah.
I I think that, you know, we'll be discussing a little bit later on in the agenda, a little bit about uh criteria for the uh Department of Public Works study. And this might be something that is really the um scheduling and the control of the, well, the s- I I would guess sub-control of the r- room might be a facilities uh department, you know, quote-unquote, uh facilities agent of some nature. So that's that's one of the things that I, you know, I would like to see as we discuss the public's uh Works Department, who's gonna be in control of facilities. So it's um yeah, the facilities manager.
Facilities man.
But the uh who who runs this area and who controls this area?
The who, like the primary of this building?
Well, not the building, but the meeting room, yeah.
Either me- meetings and stuff, we have a master calendar and everybody just plugs it into the master calendar.
Right.
Barber handles the master calendar for the for the for the COA.
Okay.
I mean, if there are a master calendar, I I certainly wouldn't wanna see David handle the master calendar for that room. Um but like Charlie said, uh first and foremost, it's for, you know, emergency management, uh storms and blah blah, all that stuff.
Okay.
And then after that, I would assume that everything would run through the master calendar, unless, of course, there are police trainings, and that's another thing too.
Mm. Mm.
Like if there's trainings at night, then we're not using the room because that's one of the reasons why we built the room, so we could have other communities come in and use the room for police training, so um.
Mm-hmm. Mm.
Right.
Right.
On the community, did you just say that?
We'd have to work.
Yeah, uh because they they can offer a training and we can, I think that's that's how it works, right? We offer a training and.
Right, right, yeah. Um well, y- you could have.
Not through through our department, not not on their own, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And and also the the same thing, the fire department might be uh inclined to wanna use it for a classroom training uh session instead of having this set of folding chairs and a move equipment out of a a fire bay or something like that, they could use and have a little bit more comfortable situation. So.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we we have some.
Yeah, right, but I I just wanted to see, we say it's time, but it's six or seven months away, you know, it'd be here before we know it.
Yeah.
So I I wanted to uh just put those out and like I say, anyone who has any other um oh issues or questions they wanna put on, they feel free to, so we have a we have a plan.
Why don't why don't each of us answer some of these ten questions and send them off to David and then he can put them all together? So he can put every, like question one, and then put all of our ideas under question one, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting or two subsequent meetings from now.
Alright, okay. Right.
Okay, okay.
I have actually in two other communities have developed a policy. Uh in Carlisle, when I got there, we were going through the punch list to finalize uh a brand-new town hall, and we had a very large function room. And uh as a result of that, uh we wanted to uh be able to control the use of that room so that people weren't, you know, having food in there and spilling drinks and things like that and and different, you know, identifying specifically what groups would be in, what groups, you know, would not be allowed to use the room. So I can dig that out. Similarly, in Millbury, I uh, the Ace of Waters mansion uh was being used for different groups and I'm pretty sure I have a policy for that too. Granted, it's from the ti- you know, the Wayback Machine, but um you know, this'll probably applicable to the situation we might have here and incorporating all the ideas that have been generated by Tim and Allie and getting feedback from the board, uh all of those could be incorporated into a final policy.
Um if if the chair doesn't mind, I'd also like to send it off to um Gary and and Carlton as well. Maybe they can answer some of those questions too.
Mm. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Okay, we'll move on to uh item number two, which is the scope of the department of uh Department of Public Works feasibility study. And once again, get some feedback on what we would like to see uh the study possibly be.
I had sent this out uh two weeks or so ago and asked for feedback from the board. These are just initial thoughts, you know, obviously the board, you know, has different thoughts on what should be included in a study, but this is just my first draft at uh trying to craft out specifically what the board would want uh from such a study. I'd actually had to ask the uh ask municipal m- uh management personnel uh group uh if there were uh samples of, you know, scope out there and I didn't get any responses back, so you know, I I don't know who else we could come to and con- contact to see if we can get a more defined scope. I'll continue to pursue that.
Mm.
David, can you come up with a a sample uh of what you'd like to see and then we can go from there, but um I was just working from scratch.
Well, that's sort of the framework of that. I I'm asking, you know, if the board wants to see other things. Once again, like I said, there may be other towns out there that have done. I know uh Charlie had uh had a report from another community, maybe contacting them and see what they use.
Uh yes, I I read a uh I saw online and I read a uh scope study from uh for the town of Marion uh done about two years ago. Um going and consolidating uh their departments into a dep- more into a Department of Public Works. They had a Department of Public Works under a superintendent. Uh it wasn't all con- uh inclusive and they they studied uh how h- how actually things were being done. Um I just um going through here, I just wanted to add another one, David, of uh engineering, um and the costs of engineering that we have now. Um also, I know we, they do what is referred to as um oh peer review of plans uh in the planning board and in conservation oftentimes. And what the town does is because these plans will be too complex for the board themselves to go over. Um the petitioner uh pays a uh sum of money, they hold it in escrow, and then um the town goes out and um con- contracts with a engineering environmental study uh company. They do the peer review and the the money to pay for it is from this escrow. Um I don't know, I I'm wondering if we might not be able to, maybe if we have a, say we had a director of public uh works who had a civil engineering degree, uh he might be able to do some of that. Not necessarily is he gotta be able to do all of it, but he might be able to do some of that. And that might be also revenue that we can use to pay a director's salary, things like that, or the costs.
Yeah, I agree. Also, um can we see an organizational chart and the impact on contracts as well?
Okay, yeah. Did you happen to get that? Yes, that's another. I I wanna I wanted to have a s- to have a plan.
Mm-hmm.
So we we know, we're not just, because, you know, we we list, uh, you know, w- highway uh capital facilities, water, uh sewer commission, all that. And is that going to be able to be uh.
Is it sustainable?
Right, yeah, exactly, right. I- is it is it, we don't know for sure. I I'm thinking that most of them are intertwined, but, you know,
Yeah, I have no idea.
can you expect the director to be able to do all of that?
Because some of these are boards and committees and not necessarily are they, you know, like cemetery commission, you know?
Right.
So how would how would that fall into this? So that's why I said like an organi- organizational chart and and impact on those boards and committees and also on contracts as well.
Exactly. Mm. Yeah.
I think that's something important. And can we get the study that Marion did and look that over?
Sure.
Figure it out.
Yeah, um I'm actually, I I'll look at, I don't know if I actually printed it out.
I haven't though, okay.
I can redo, okay. I I need to.
And um does Dartmouth have one as well? I mean, I know they have a D P.
Yes, I don't know if they've ever done a study of that.
Okay.
I I read there was a Marion one I read, uh I believe it was Harvard, uh Mass did another.
There's some of your list in Mass.
Yeah, and I'm thinking of th- there was a third. I had uh oh uh seen some of them, like the Mar- um the Marion study was more incorporating more departments into the Department of Public Works and having a director. Um the Harvard one, I believe, was more of a study of how efficient they were, um, in that type of thing.
Okay, uh and another question that I would have is, um how long did the process take? I mean, they didn't just flip a switch and say, we're starting this next year. Did they slowly add more to their list or did they do it all at one time?
Right, yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, David?
Could we get copies of these studies we're talking about so that we could study them?
Alright. Sure. Um like I say, I I know I have the Mar- the Marion, um and, you know, it was kinda just roo- perusing uh some websites and I happened to see some of this. Um okay, item num- item number three, chapter ninety ninety, final reports for Mill uh Miller curbing purchase, resurfacing of Braley Road, resurfing s- thing of Bryant Street and engineering for Nottingham Way. And we have those in front of us. Um so you wanna put them over, um then I will entertain any discussions we might have. Mm-hmm. Mike, are you kinda here on that or not?
Maybe, depends on the questions, yeah.
Okay. I I just, I have a question. A couple of them, uh it's the actual cost ran over what was the proposal in the paperwork initially, uh like Braley Road, I believe it's like six hundred and some dollars and so forth. Do you know, um, if I I know that, well, and I seen Nottingham uh Way, the engineering was like seven f- seventy-five hundred dollars and it cost thirty-five hundred dollars. Do you know if the if the cost overruns are gonna be funded by uh chapter ninety?
Yes, so they allow, as long as you don't go over your total allotment, they allow the individual projects to be as much as five percent over.
Uh. Okay.
Um and I know as of this morning, I wanna say there was thirty-nine thousand that we had not allocated to any kind of project.
Mm.
So that's more than enough by tens of thousands of dollars to cover the the parts where we went over on different things.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh and that's uh last year's chapter ninety and that is not partake, not in uh including this year's.
It's it's cumulative, so whatever money has been allocated to us from the beginning of time that's still available.
C- yes. Okay, mm. So, um entertain any discussion?
Um I'll make a motion to approve the final chapter ninety reports for eighty-eight hundred for Miller curb purchase, uh refor- uh resurfacing for Braley Road in the amount of two twenty-five, one eighty-two, thirty-three, resurfacing of Bryant Street in the amount of thirty-two thousand three ninety-five, eighty-one, and engineering of Nottingham Way in the amount of um three thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Uh any further discussion? If not, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. Um item number four, mowing at ball fields leased to Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association. And uh it's come to the board's attention that because of the lack of manpower presently in the highway department, that mowing the ball fields this fall would become an issue. Uh if we go, if we look at um the agreement between the association and ourselves, it does um it it basically states, in the event that the Board of Selectmen determines that such mowing cannot be accomplished, the Board of Selectmen shall so notify tenant, being the association, and tenant shall, as necessary to meet the requirements for the use of the premises, undertake the obligation of mowing and disposing of grass cuttings.
Exactly, who is the association?
It's the Free Town Lakeville uh Athletic Association. Um they organize all the um Little League, um oh softball league.
Little League soccer, Little League soccer, softball, and football.
Yes.
So this came up because we did have, um, in our meeting with the um with the guys from Highway, um, you know, they were looking over their list that Chuck gives them, and they're like, we can't get to the mowing.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm like, I don't think we have to do the mowing, so I had Allie pull up the lease and sure enough, we don't have to do the mowing as long as we tell them in advance.
Uh-huh.
So the other day, somebody was dropping off their child at the program and he, actually, they're gonna come in to speak to us because they're looking to um fix up the K R R field, I believe. Um so I said, well, we're gonna meet as a board and we may not be able to cut the fields this fall. And they're like, that's fine, because they have somebody that's going to help them cut the fields and make them look better than what they are right now, 'cause we can't get to them. So I thought I'd bring that forward to the board.
So they can do it, it's not an issue?
Mm-hmm. They, that's what they said, so that's what one of the, I'm not gonna speak for all of them, I'm gonna speak to that, about that gentleman
Okay.
Um.
who said that he does the soccer part of it and they're gonna come in and talk to us in a couple of weeks because um they wanted to do some other stuff over there, so I just.
Should we wait till we talk to them?
I think we should send him a letter. I think, uh, I'm only one, should send them a letter saying that, you know, due to the manpower at, you know, at we're not gonna be able to cut the fi- they know we're not gonna be able to cut the fields. I mean, we don't lose anything out of it.
No, okay.
And we help when we can, so just right now, it's a hardship. It goes two ways.
Mm. I I have to say, I I would agree that uh m- mowing the ball fields is gonna have to be a downer priority.
No, but. Yeah. Now, what. But can you explain to me why it's a hardship now?
Why it's a hardship for the highway department?
Yeah.
Because there's not enough manpower to uh carry out the mowing in a timely manner in the uh condition that.
What is the root cause of not having enough manpower?
Well, the the fact you have a, two uh people are presently out on Workman's Comp uh and then there's this third opening uh that has not been uh able to be filled as of yet. So instead of having a five-man crew, you're down to a two, presently a two-man crew um to do outside work. Um I believe one of the um members that is on Workman's Comp will be able to come back in a short period of time. By at the present time, we're down to two people doing that.
Should we be looking into temporary employees that could be called in in cases like this? I mean, it sounds like we have no backup plan.
Well, it's, well, first of all, it's not our plan. Uh well, uh but um, well, l- later in the uh meeting here, we're going to be um
Right.
oh discussing the p- uh potential of having uh uh Teddy Walsh, who uh retired uh back in June, come back temporarily uh for a few months. Um but the thing is that, you know, we we have to, never mind uh temporary people, we have to get some full-time people back.
I know, I I mean, it sounds to me like we have a major problem here. Cutting the grass for fields is just a small symptom.
Right.
Uh but this could be a much bigger problem if we don't have adequate staff to take care of town properties.
Right, so we have in a a little bit of a bind uh at the present time. Um would I.
I'll make a motion to um to send Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association um a letter saying that we are unable to um mow the grass at this time and any help that they could give towards the town would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, and I I'm just wondering if we should uh ask that the highway department do it one more time? And then that way, if there's an issue between the time that the letter goes and and they get their operation to mow it themselves, uh we possibly could do it.
Why don't we ask them if they have the capability of doing it? If they do, then we would.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're they're gonna, it's part of their agreement, they're gonna have to uh come up with a plan, you know, with a plan.
They have to, r- right.
Uh but I'm just wondering, we might be a little bit way of smoothing things over a little bit, uh, you know, changing.
They're from this, the the discussion, they're not upset, but like I said, it's one person, so who knows?
Okay. Alright, well, alright, so I'll entertain a motion on.
I made it.
A moment, okay.
I'll abstain.
Uh alright, I'll I'll second the motion, uh that we direct a letter to the uh Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association advising them that uh ended the contract that we have with them, agreement with them, that they are going to have to uh mow the fields. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um oh, item number five is um a letter from the Highway Surveyor um requesting that we um oh increase the rates for snowplow um equipment for the um coming snow season. Uh from eight-foot plow from sixty-nine dollars an hour to seventy-five dollars an hour, and nine-foot plow from seventy-three dollars an hour to eighty dollars an hour, ten-foot plow from ninety-five dollars uh an hour to to one hundred dollars an hour, and the front-end loader with a with a uh three-cubic yard bucket or larger, um a hun- from a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Seems to me the percentages are a lot higher than inflation.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Around ten percent, around ten percent.
Well, I.
Do you think? Well, what did they do?
I believe.
It's like around ten percent.
Yes, inflation hasn't been ten percent either.
I believe that.
Oh no, when the last time they they changed it, though, I don't.
Yeah.
Well, it says here that the loader rate has not been increased, so we could talk about that, but the other three, we we don't know.
Well, it says they they were increased in twenty sixteen. My, the question that I have is that we're using the CPI inflation calculator, which you brought up, is higher th- this seems higher, but we're not comparing it to any other towns, and I'd like to see a comparison to other towns first.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, m- a motion made and seconded that before we approve the rates, that we uh get a um rundown on some neighboring communities. Yes, Mike?
I I would just point out, we're actually a week behind when the contracts are usually released.
Uh-huh.
So if it's, not to say not to compare to other towns, but if you weren't gonna do that tonight, you might wanna just keep, vote to keep the same rates for this year and increase them next year, 'cause if you're waiting another two weeks to meet, you're gonna be almost a month behind when the contracts usually go out.
John, can you, yes, yes.
George had mentioned uh addressed the issue as far as the ball fields, there's a shortage of manpower at the highway department now.
Mm-hmm.
And then this is gonna be a shortage of manpower to drive the trucks that we own, town owns.
Mm-hmm.
It means the contract is gonna be more important. We need to do something to attract contractors rather than, you know, 'cause we're gonna have trucks sitting, because I don't believe we can put, or is it possible that we can put contract drivers in town trucks?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um.
No, it's not, it's not possible, correct?
Okay.
Well, they would have to be, I think they'd have to be cut, that you could do it if you um like appointed them as a special employees or something like that.
So we're gonna. But you have to be said to that.
And then.
Yeah.
So to ensure that we have the proper amount of contractors and the appropriate pieces, a number of pieces of equipment available to the town
Right, yeah, you have to.
if and when the snow falls, it would be beneficial to offer a little bit more money to these contractors to to get them to s- to get them out.
Mm-hmm. Mm.
We can have a meeting Friday morning once we know.
I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be available, um.
Week. When are you coming? Where are you going?
Uh I'll be out, I'll be off on Friday. It would be n- next Tuesday, but so.
Okay, so why don't we just do it next Tuesday?
Alright, um, you know.
Why, I I mean, it's, we're not, we're gonna, sorry, George. And it's not gonna take long to see what other towns are doing, right, as far as contracts go?
Mm.
The number are a little flung together and this.
No, I I don't think we're tra- I'm just anticipating you're not gonna meet for another two weeks and this.
Yeah, but if this is gonna hold things up, I'd rather not and just get it out there as soon as we can. But I think that if Tim has everything else that we need to go out, which ordinarily they do, and we just plug in the numbers,
Mm-hmm.
Right.
or if we vote on the numbers and then plug 'em in, then we can get it out sorta right away.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the other thing that this brings up to me is that we we have shortage of personnel. Can we look into a methodology where we can hire temporary employees that would be on call for certain things? Uh in private sector, we used to have, we'd call them per diems, and these were people who were just basically available when you needed them.
That's sorta what this is. They get paid per diem, that's what this is.
Yeah.
Right, no, no, but.
We actually did that in town hall when we.
But if we have equipment, town equipment that's not being used to plow because we don't have staff, then we could bring our own drivers and it probably would, well, maybe less expensive, I don't know.
We we did that in one instance, maybe about nine or ten years ago, actually, when Teddy had his knee replaced.
Yeah.
'Cause he had his knee replaced at the beginning of November, I think, so we ended up with a, somebody who only came in if we were going out to sand or to plow
Okay.
during the regular workday, he was not there.
Right. Yes, exactly.
That that was a very unique instance, but it would be along the lines of what you were talking about.
That's exactly what I'm.
Charlie, I got a quick question.
Yeah, yes.
Is mandatory for town employees to stay if they know there's storm coming instead of taking the whole weekend off when they know there's a big snowstorm in the weekend? That happened last year quite a few times.
Yeah. Well, one of the um things would be, that would be working with the Highway Surveyor and his crew. It's it's not something.
I mean, if you take a job on to work during the summer, you have to be around for the winter. I mean, if you take a job on to work during the summer, you have to be around for the winter, not take the weekend off.
Right. That's, you know, that we said, that's under the direction that the highway surveyor was then and will be now. Uh so we can't address that problem. Um if, you know, unless we're asked or by the highway surveyor to sit down, come up with uh possibly a conf a contract, uh clause or something like that. It's really within his direction.
Well, you're short right now, so if these guys take the weekend off, and there's usually a snowstorm almost all the time on the weekends, you're not gonna have anyone.
Uh-huh. Well, yes, but okay, once again, it's it's gonna it's gonna have to come from highway surveyors, so.
I've plowed over twenty years, I know. You sign on, you 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 plow every storm. I never miss a storm.
Yeah. Right, uh-huh.
Hello?
Yes.
We, so you're saying it's something that that's on the super highway superintendent, but doesn't the personnel board control the hiring of?
Um no.
Well, yeah, because if I recall, a couple of weeks ago, the personnel board, I mean, in conjunction, the board in conjunction with the personnel board and the town administrator made the decision to hire a truck driver.
No, no, no. Yep. The. Right.
So the personnel board sets the con makes the contractual agreement, not the highway superintendent.
We we made the contractual agreement, but how the department operates and how he deploys his personnel is under it's it's his pro- prerogative.
But an employment, unemployed, an employment contract can include certain provisions to ensure that any new hires that come on.
It was a position that was created.
Right. Okay, but okay, we're we're going off the track here. But okay, but Mark, we're we're off the tracks here. We're we're talking about, we're, but no.
She's taken her head, yes, and now taken her head, no.
Well, I I so I'm saying, yes, if there was a a something wrong with the contract, yes.
But. But we're 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 talking about rates, okay, we're talking about setting rates, so I wanna keep it to talking about setting the rates. Um so the it it here.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Right, exactly. There's a motion uh that we uh hold off on setting the rates tonight, getting a survey from neighboring communities as to their rates and uh reviewing them next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay, and um we'll s we'll set a little time for the meeting on this Tuesday.
Have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday?
Hm? No, but are you around next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, I can send.
So I don't mind doing it first thing in the morning if that's the only thing, and then I can go to work for the rest of the day, then that'll give 'em a whole extra day,
Right. Right.
Uh-huh.
you know, to get things out. So if that works for everybody, that that's fine with me.
Right. Yeah, that works for me. Next Tuesday. Yes, next Tuesday. Uh.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
What's the date, the tenth?
Yes.
No, no. Uh, yeah, September or?
There is, yes, it's the tenth.
The tenth.
Eight thirty?
Yes.
Oh, we have a meeting at ten. Prime Star Building.
Okay, I can't I can't do that, but so you guys can handle that? I'll so that works?
Okay. Okay, mine's at nine, so. Yeah. Yes. Eight eight thirty, yes.
Okay.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, eight thirty would be good because mine is ten.
I have to do.
Where is that gonna be?
Uh.
John sees any assessors? Or are you coming here?
Yes. Um I would say we'd probably be in the assessor's office. It's easier. We can ruffle any feathers there.
Town hall?
Yes, probably assessor's office. We'll be posted.
Yeah.
Okay, uh item number six.
Uh, you need to call the vote.
Oh, okay, I don't need to, alright, exactly. Uh so with the motion, uh any other discussion?
Right.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh item number six um is a couple of years ago, I brought this up because basically of uh an incident or two in town in which we had um oh at what uh brought this to my attention would be uh parties that were um very large and um enforcing um disturbing the peace statute, for lack of a better term, um was uh problematic. So this would um um tell a little bit about what the standards are for noise and what um can be done at different times and um oh how how to enforce it. Um, you know, I would bring I it's something I would like to see on the uh special town meeting as an audit.
So you're gonna include this with the warrants?
I I that was my intention here, right.
I mean. Yeah, you can include it with the warrants, okay.
Okay, I just want any feedback or anything.
I with me, I know you've been working on it, so.
George?
Uh, are we voting?
Well, I I.
No, I have nothing, I have nothing to add.
Okay. I I would like to see a vote on uh putting it on the warrant.
No.
Can we vote on that now, or do we have to wait till the this?
Uh.
Can you hit the warrant, just?
Uh.
So we're voting to put it on the warrant?
You you wanna.
No, I think we're just voting to submit it for the warrant.
Alright, right, exactly. Exactly.
But we'll vote on that later, okay.
That's right.
Right, yes.
On the actual language.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll vote on that later. We'll just.
Yes.
I'd like to see you put this through. Last year I was at the same meeting when somebody when you was told that you needed too much work, so I hope they helped you, so you don't get the same kick it away type thing.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Alright, okay, I I think we have done that.
Oh, excellent.
Okay.
Can we go ahead and read it?
Uh once it's on the warrant, okay, becau- actually because it what what we have before us right now, uh Steve, is basically the article with red lines, uh yeah, a lot of red lines and so forth.
Lot of red lines.
Okay, so yes, certainly we're we're told on the warrant.
Would this, all of this would be on the warrant?
Yes.
Alright.
Of course, some of it's been edited out, George, so.
Yeah, okay. So uh did we have a motion?
I'll I'll make a motion to um forward this to be included with the warrants.
Second.
Okay, uh motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um item number seven is uh the letter that the um proposed to be sent out to um employees notifying them if they have um any issues in the workplace to first of all um speak to uh Personnel Director, Ally Getz, Negoltz, Pyle, and uh go from there, so.
Uh is it, is this a letter that you want to go out? That's not what I had read before. It was another letter that we had looked at prior. I'm a little confused there.
This is the letter that Town Council wants us to send to all the employees.
Town Council. That's not what you showed me before, David, right?
Uh, it should be, yes.
Uh what I was shown before talked about uh danger in the workplace or?
That was an earlier letter that we had sent out to employees. Yeah, that other one went out, yeah. That was relative to if anybody felt
That did go out?
that there were any kind of public danger, particularly like highway people, uh that, you know, that they should come and see me and this is completely separate from that.
Right, right. Okay. Okay, 'cause this is the first time I've seen this, and I was under the impression that the d-
Okay. The other letter was.
The other letter was, but this is much better, so this is good.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send that out.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The motion made and seconded. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, um item number eight is a letter from uh Chief Abbott of the Police Department. Um speaking of traffic issues in traffic configurations, so to speak, uh at the uh intersection commonly known as the Asona Four Corners. Um and he is um making a little bit of a recommend, he's making a recommendation that we look into carrying out a study that would um look into the, as referred to as Massachusetts Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is actually um from their uh offshoot from the uh National uh Uniform Traffic Control.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this because this is way overdue, that intersection is terrible.
So I'll I'll second your motion with discussion. I think we should send this over to Serphead. Serphead's the one that did the study for um the roundabout over in East Freetown. Um so I think that without spending town money, um it's money that we've al- we already spend through taxation, that we could use their expertise and have them do some sort of study on that.
Do you, I I'm just gonna ask David a question if he knows. Do you know if um Serphead, off the top of your head so to speak,
Yeah.
so.
will do this without it being, or does it have to come from our allotment, I guess?
Uh basically, the way that would work is you get twenty hours per year allocated to uh the town uh in return for the assessment that the town pays to Serphead to continue their operations. Uh this year we had talked about using half of it uh through EDC and relative to the source study and things like that, and the other half would be at the discretion of the board. Uh hopefully, they would be able to do this kind of work uh uh with uh ten hours of uh.
Did DOT get involved with this?
The regulations are uh uh it's uh what's called Uniform Traffic Manual. Uh they that specifies exactly what criteria are needed uh to establish things such as stop signs and uh signalization and lights and yield signs and that kind of thing. So, yeah, I DOT not s probably not specifically. Although the item is the highway start there or?
No, it this is all town road.
Mm.
Alright, okay.
It's all town road, yeah.
That's not part of seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine is not a state highway. It's a state designated route, or also referred to as a a road that goes from community to community. So it's not, um, although it has a number, it's not a state highway. Um yeah, like Route eighteen is a state highway. County Road, even though it's not a de- designated road anymore, it's still a state highway. They never uh relinquished it and we have never picked it up. Um so, yeah, um I'm good with this, as long as it can stay within the ten hours, you know, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. But uh.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can ask uh Chief about this?
Sure. Um.
Am I gonna add something to it?
We just, we were talking about um Serphead doing a traffic study or um that George was wanting.
Okay, so so the background on the uh the letter is that, uh I'll throw out some facts, is about nine thousand cars that come through that intersection a day, okay?
Yeah.
Uh per Mass Highway. Um and I know that our town hall employees have been using the parking area in front of the van stand, and one of their concerns is is crossing the street there. Um so in view of the volume of traffic uh and the uh, you know, pedestrians' concerns, as well as some confusion about the signage, you know, I submitted to the board uh you know, whatever your pleasure is, whether you wanna engage someone, uh an engineer or approach Serphead or or not, you know, that that's certainly a prerogative. I I will say, however, that uh a data search from January first, two thousand fifteen, only yielded approximately nine accidents within the intersection. But there's a lot of the anecdotal stories and information about near misses and people, you know, beeping the horn and some driver rage, et cetera, so. So that's what I have for you.
Just to try to show them what's going on. They all have to back, the cars have to back up at a fire station to let them through, so it's like.
Yeah, trying to turn in the middle of the four.
Chief, what is this? Can you interpret this for us?
Yeah, so that's uh Mass DOT. Um that that's all accessible on their website, and on this particular document, it indicates that the location ID is the point where they measured the vehicles. That was on South Main Street. And for two thousand eighteen, the uh uh daily adjusted annual daily traffic count is uh over nine thousand vehicles. That point that they measured was a little south of the uh the Four Corners, but it certainly would be uh representative of all the vehicles coming through that point, so.
So, so they're only measuring it from South Main Street coming up?
Well, yeah, so they're they're uh, you know, somewhat south of the intersection, but they're measuring both northbound and southbound traffic, and they came up with that figure.
And did that include the west, uh yeah, western bound traffic coming from Route seventy-nine into the corner?
Yes, yes, it would. Yes, it is.
Could that sound inclusive? Okay. Still a lot of cars.
It it would miss traffic coming North Main, taking a left onto South Main Street.
That's correct, that's that's accurate, yes.
It's gonna be more than that, but um, well, maybe.
Yeah, I I I didn't look at that, 'cause there was a measurement on North Main Street too. Um but it's, you know, ballpark.
Yeah, maybe. Uh-huh. Yeah, right.
I'll go to the file. So put this in your file, please.
Mm-hmm. Alright, um.
Did you call the vote?
I did not call a vote. Um so, how about you try to, what's, I guess so. Motion. Oh, a motion uh is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Uh police station update.
So you can go by, and every time you go by, you can see that the station is really taking shape. We're almost closed. Um we've updated the colors um of the police station. Um we're starting to look at the inside furniture, radios. Um we're still working on getting the um tower. Um but you can really see that everything's starting to take place and take shape, and it looks really good. Everything else is on schedule, and um we're we're good. Knock on wood.
Okay, alright, just from the impression about the tower. Have we signed an agreement yet?
No.
No.
No, uh the proposal came in, it looked very similar to the previous one, and I think there's been some communication about
Uh-huh. Yeah.
uh clarifying that that recent proposal.
Definitely.
As soon as it comes in, the pen's ready.
Yes, alright.
Lock it in.
Alright, I'll turn it over to the uh Board of Health for item number ten, staffing at the uh transfer station. Okay. I don't have a number ten on here. No, do you have a number ten?
No.
Um I think it was basically you had brought up the uh issue of potentially temporary service or something like that.
No. It just said.
Right. Um. So, I don't know, uh what we might do there.
Well, we have discussed looking into hiring temporary employees to cover so that we don't go through what we've gone through in the last few weeks. It's been a, I won't say a disaster, but it's been been a very bad situation.
Well, it it's basically tying into what you brought up with the highway, looking into, you know, do we look at a per diem position or, you know, I had even mentioned senior work off, just another person that you can have there as a body, so it doesn't have to close in case a situation like what we're in now were to happen again, or even if our part-timer, I mean, he's a college student, if he decides he wants to focus more on his studies and then we have a gap in that. So I think that's where the discussion came up.
So, uh you know, my thoughts are that we should find, I don't know how many people you would think you'd need, one, two, or three, that would just be available on a knock call basis. That would be on the payroll, that would be trained.
Oh, I wouldn't think you would need more than one, really.
Well, we we those types of employees, when you call them, the downside is they don't have to say, I can come in.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so they're on call when they want to come in. If if it works for both you and the employee, it's okay. So I like a person of brothers would be that we have at least two, minimum of two. Uh and that they would get trained and then be available as needed.
Yeah, uh I mean, it's up to the board. If that's, if the board would like to head in that direction, that's fine.
Do you know if there's anybody? Do you know if there's anybody available for senior work off?
I don't. Um I can think of maybe my boat ramp people might wanna do it, but other than that, I'm I'm lax.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
I haven't really like dug deep.
I didn't know if you knew. That's you brought it up, so I didn't know if you knew.
No, I I really haven't dug deep as to who's available, how many people or anything like that.
Can we put that in the uh C O A newsletter as a starter?
I I'll be able to.
We need we need also to think about uh any potential impacts uh regarding collective bargaining and the union and hiring a temporary employee. Uh how the union would feel about that.
But why?
That's what I was just gonna say, because this is all union.
Right.
But no, we can meet with the union. We can meet with the union and discuss it.
I wear the hat with the union.
Yeah, they can they can bargain it. It's not like they couldn't bargain it.
Yes, um. Just just so you know, I I did get the newsletter from the uh Council on Aging and they did uh mention about the work off uh time periods coming into, so that's something to be.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean what do we pay people on on that work off? That just reduces your taxes, right?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that that's appropriate for this job personally. But I mean I think it should be a paid position.
Mm.
It's a lot of liability in that place too.
That's exactly right.
And you're talking insurance liability.
All right, I may have to do that, just direct it to the chair.
Oh.
All right, ju- just just to ask permission to speak would be nice, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, give permission, please.
Yes, that would kind of get recognized and.
There's a lot of liability.
Uh-huh.
Um there's insurance involved. Uh you just can't take Joe Smo off the street and throw him in there.
And that's the point.
Correct.
That is really the point.
I mean, if someone's out sick, does that mean that every person's a job? They're just gonna go hire somebody else now? In the town hall, they had a baby and they're out for six weeks. You're gonna go hire a temporary employee for them?
I I'm missing your point there, so.
I mean, you know, if everybody is having an operation or something like that, I can't for a big utility company. And they just didn't run out and hire people to fill a position.
I I guess I'm really not following you.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, it just seems odd. Why are you gonna keep trying to make those temporary places when people are probably gonna come back to work?
Well, because you have times where especially in a small shop like the transfer station, there's only two people there and they could both be out, or we're supposed to have two people staffing. It's really the what's the optimum staffing for the transfer station?
It's usually one person for one and a half days and then there's two people for two and a half days.
Okay, so you have two people. If one of them is out, uh I mean then you have a pool of people that that are trained that you can call in. That's the whole purpose of per diem staff. Uh what's suggested that we go to temporary agencies, but I personally that doesn't work for me because they're not trained. You never know who they're going to send and it's expensive. Um so if you have volunteers, or there wouldn't be volunteers, there would be um per diem employees. Just a lot of businesses use that and it does work.
I think if it's a long-term situation where you know an employee is gonna be out an extended period of time, the use of a temporary employee, if there's a qualified agency that can provide that and if it's agreeable with the union to allow it, um I think that could be a short-term solution.
Well, I would totally disagree with you, David, because if it's an agency, you don't know who you're getting. They're certainly not gonna be trained.
Mm-hmm. Well, we we there would be an expectation that you would do training, you know, when we had the temporary person.
But that's. But that's not the nature of temporary agencies. I really have a problem with that, you know, plus you're handling money. Uh no, I I would be dead set against an agency supplying someone for that particular job. But again, uh my druthers would be to hire per diems, train them and let them work one day a month or something or, you know, what whatever would work for you, but so that you would be able to call on people that you know that you've trained.
Yeah, so I guess we'd have to start with the union and see where we would be at with union or what kind of uh
Yes.
Then allowing.
Yes.
hurdles we would have to cross with that and then we could take it from there.
Yes.
But I can, I'll at least start the conversation there and then we can move forward.
But does the director of the board agree with this, I mean?
So I think it's I I see both sides. I think it's really hard when the transfer station only has one person and it's closed. But I understand that there are, you know, there are a multitude of reasons why a person might not be into in work, right? But it's hard when townspeople are relying on a transfer station to be open at certain times and then there they go and then there's no one there. I get I get that, so I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
There's an expectation.
I I mean, we would certainly have to, whomever is gonna go in there, whether it be per diem or not, it's gonna take a long time to train them. I mean, it's not gonna take.
Mm-hmm.
So then we would have to, you know, make sure that we had enough money in the budget for that. And then is 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 the benefit, is there gonna be a benefit at the end? Like, are we gonna have enough work for them to do to keep them there once a month or twice a month?
Well, that's.
Or are we have to gonna, if they're not interested anymore, are we gonna have to go through the whole like process over again?
So if we don't do per diems, what are the other options besides a c- a commercial or rent the guy?
So. But what I would like to see, and this is only, you know, a thought process, is that m- maybe not, maybe for the annual town meeting when we start to do budgets, look for another part-time person to work at the transfer station. So now you'd have two part-time people, one full-time person, and then if somebody's out, the expectation would be that that other part-time person would have to fill in.
That would work.
So then now we have somebody long-term that's on our books that we can go back and they're getting something out of it.
Would that other part-time person be like like a weekly employee, like every week they have sort of hours or?
You would you would come up, you would come up with a schedule. You know, you might wanna see this person work in just that end of the transfer station and another one work in that end.
Right.
That's that's not my, that's that's not my purview, but I'm saying like it's it's, you know, it's really um solving a problem that we're having because
I see. Not assuming like.
certainly you have two people and one's out and or and one's not scheduled to work. There's an issue there. And I think that that might be a good way to try to fix it. But it can't, it won't happen for the fall, but it certainly can happen when we're going over budgets.
Yeah.
Right, right.
If I if I may, I'm I'm wondering if this isn't just the type of issue we wanna have in a uh potential Department of Public Works study. Um it's, you know, have, you know.
Yes.
Moving people around, having the ability.
Yes, but it's a classic example of.
The ability to flex somewhere, getting to have fast training and allowing people to do different types of things.
Mm-hmm.
The 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 flex or whatever.
Right.
I think long-term, we should definitely look at that.
Mm-hmm, uh so I I think that this probably, you know, when we get down to it, uh would probably be something that could come out of the study
Yeah.
and then it's a another issue that we bring forward of why why it's a why would be good to have an Department of Public Works.
Yeah, but meanwhile, uh meanwhile, we have probably at least best case scenario, two years before we have a public works.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I I don't know if it would be two years, um but it
Okay.
it'd be eight, it would be eighteen months at least.
I want. I don't do this.
Think it's.
No, 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 I I'm just, I I I at first I didn't realize what you were saying, eighteen months.
And that person. That person might not work twenty at part-time. Maybe maybe it's not a nineteen hour a week position. Maybe it's a fifteen or a ten hour a week position. You know what I mean?
Right. Mm-hmm.
You might, I don't know. I think that's.
But that the.
I I think if we're gonna if we're gonna go through with it, I think we're better off looking for a part-time person than a couple of per diems. I'd rather, if we're gonna pull the trigger, I'd rather just pull the trigger altogether than.
That's fine with me. That that's fine.
Than to kinda like mess around with a little per diem or let's get two maybe. I'd rather just get another part-time person and call it a day.
So that you would have three employees?
So there would be three up there instead of just two.
Okay.
One full time.
But not every day, right?
One. No, what I mean, just brainstorming.
You would schedule it. So two would be there every day, at least two.
Right, you have one person at Thursday and the first half of Friday, then we got the other person second.
Yeah, it can only open four days, right?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, so for three people, with two working and one off.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's fine.
But and that opens it up to something else, right? Now you're gonna have two people there. Maybe we're not open four days. Maybe we're open five days now.
Well, yeah.
So that's something that we can not look at right now, but I think that because it's hard. Four days at the transfer ta- station for people that work full-time, it's hard.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So anyway, my two cents.
All right.
So how do we do this?
That we'll have Derek start to look into it and we'll do something for the annual.
I need an notation for the budget.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so we can do this prior to the annual or is this gonna hang in there until the annual?
No. It'd have to be until the annual, yeah. And that wouldn't start till July first.
And there's more. So there, so what's a short-term solution for Derek's issues?
There isn't one.
Well, you have to have.
Either I cover it or it'd have to close. I mean, that's.
Neither solution, neither is a solution.
I mean, it's all, it's not like Vicki is scheduled to be out of work for the next six months. I mean, as of right now, I think she's back tomorrow. So I mean, uh short term, as long as we're getting her back, we're gonna be fine. I can I can probably count on one hand, other than like the last couple of months, I can probably count on one hand the amount of times we closed.
How.
It's it's been now that's been an issue.
How much mm um how much money do you have in the budget if you were to do another part-time person ten hours a week?
Right now, not like.
Mm-hmm. Can you, all right, so but but how much, can you run those numbers for us and bring them back to the board at our next meeting? And should we have to go for a reserve tr- fund transfer? That's something that's unforeseen that we're breaking down and it it's not working.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense. Okay, onto personnel matters.
Um town administrator performance review criteria.
Uh okay, I asked that this be put on, um um work, I would like to work towards um a review and to have uh items uh that we review the town administrator on. M- my view would be um no more than ten criteria, uh maybe even less. Uh but my um
Thanks, Derek.
my request would would be to us to think over what we wanna have as a criteria and uh go from there, so.
Okay. There's two already there. Maybe we start with looking those over. Um there's two performance criterias.
Uh two. Okay.
Two already made out um from years past. Maybe they need to be brought forward and we review them and
Um.
I.
word smith them and change them and add what we want, take out what we don't like.
Yes.
Are there any templates from other towns? Oh, that's what you, oh, okay, great.
Yeah, that's on me, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, um yeah, there's a template um for a employee review. Uh I went through it, you know, I I just listed like six that I thought. I've been thinking of another one or two, uh but I I'm just, you know, my own list and and I would be saying, okay, let's sit down as a board and come up with.
Yep.
You know, it doesn't have to be on, you know, every criteria that we we.
So we can have a working meeting instead of having anything on the agenda, just have a working meeting and where we throw it together.
Okay.
I'll I'll um dig those out. They gotta be in town hall somewhere.
Yeah.
It was for a town administrator. It wasn't for an employee, so they gotta be in there somewhere.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
All right, rates of pay for cemetery sexton, zoning board of appeals clerk, police subcommittee recordings clerk.
Um.
David?
Uh we have uh some questions regarding uh certain uh individuals or individu- not individual positions, uh one being cemetery sexton. Uh the recommendation would be to pay them the minimum wage. This is currently twelve dollars per hour. On the um Z B A, uh we have an option to, uh we have nineteen hundred dollars available. Uh we can either pay that person monthly uh as a function of, you know, dividing twelve months into nineteen hundred or pay them per meeting at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting. Similarly, uh the police station subcommittee um paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting and uh when they're all caught up, paying them by the month. That would be my recommendations.
I I have one question for you. Um the minimum wage is going up again in January?
Okay. Yeah, we're aware of that. We'd have to, we we would just call it the minimum wage and when it increases, then we would uh reconfigure it.
Okay, all right, just what's of ward's pleasure?
Um I'm kinda thinking of a stipend because um if you pay, say if you were to pay the Z B A uh clerk or one twelfth of or or what's ever left of uh well, yeah, one twelfth of uh nineteen uh seventy-one, you might be paying them more. You might be paying them less than they're actually doing. So I was thinking, we he- we have here, there was five hearings last year. We have a stipend of a hundred and uh twenty-five five dollars a meeting than, you know, where at about se- uh seven hundred and fifty, you know, roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh same way with the uh police subcommittee meeting. Uh it's pardon me, the subcommittee uh old clerk would be the same. Um I know that uh.
There's a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, and e- especially on the on the uh this Tim has spoken to, on the subcommittee, you're gonna have to go through, she's gonna have to go through the tapes and so it will take time to do that. Also, the fact that on the Z B A, you're doing work, the clerk would be doing work before the hearing, such as preparation work.
You know, preparation work.
Not just attending the hearing and taking minutes. They're gonna be doing all that, so I would recommend
So.
a hundred and twenty-five dollars in stipend per per meeting, per meeting.
Okay. Okay, you mean per meeting, okay.
Okay.
So do I have a motion? Um that would be rate of pay cemetery sexton at minimum wage and then um
I'll make that. Please.
the others at uh one tw- the recording clerk, one twenty-five per meeting.
Okay, just before I I have some discussion for Mike. Uh Mike, how long is that uh position to go this season?
It is scheduled to go through Columbus, uh yeah, Columbus Day.
Okay.
The idea was that it would stop at Columbus Day. It would kick up again a week or so before Memorial Day in each year.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um I would make a motion that we do the twelve dollars an hour uh through whatever date Columbus Day is uh October.
Fourteenth or something like that.
And then um we review this um a little bit more closely about what we wanna pay for next spring because I'm kinda thinking that uh we might want to uh have a little discussion about the rate, the rate of pay. So I'll make the motion that we have the rate of pay for cemetery sexton at twelve dollars an hour through October, whatever the
Eighteenth, fourteenth.
fourteenth, uh uh fifteenth, fourteenth, whatever it is.
Thirteenth, fourteenth. It's a question.
And then um on the rates of pay for the C B A and building committee, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting. Okay.
Yep, issue.
Okay.
Can.
Question?
Jill.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do the guys that get paid to do the highway, are they allowed to work on the rocks?
On the on the rocks?
On in front of the cemetery because.
The the headstones?
No, the rocks in front of the cemetery across from it.
The walls?
Stone walls? The the pillars?
The stone walls, because I love stone walls and I build them and when I go through a cement and I see those raw, colum- crumbling and crumbling and crumbling, I wanna start and get out there and put them on back underneath and stack them and it doesn't take a lot to do that. So I mean, are they, is that something that they can do for twelve dollars an hour? I mean, I could do it. Anybody could do it for zero.
Mm.
You just took it and did it.
We we would gladly accept volunteers. The the town doesn't own that cemetery, so I don't know if the highway department workers can work on it or not.
They work in there?
They, no, they don't.
The one from Saint, uh across from Saint Pana?
That's one of the contractors that we hire out. It's not the town employees. The town employees only mowed the assoult burying ground. Everything else is done by landscaping company. The town employees only mow the assoult bearing ground, everything else is done by landscaping companies or heat chaise.
So it's rather just just to drive by and see all the rocks collapsing for the oldest town, the second oldest town in the United States, kinda sad.
Don't think anybody, I don't think anybody wants to see them fall, but it's not our property to fix, so
No, I don't. No, I don't.
if the highway department workers would like to, or if volunteers would like to, we wouldn't object to it, but it's not something that we can necessarily ask them to do. It would kinda be the equivalent of going over and painting your neighbor's fence, 'cause it needs to be big.
No, it's not, no, it's not, it's taking pride in your community, that's what it's called.
Oh, it's. No, I I think you're mixing, this is the second meeting in a row that you've accused me of not having pride, and I'm taking offense to it, that I don't really think that you know me or the work that we do.
Okay.
I'm giving you the correct answer to your question, if you don't like it, that's fine, but you're not gonna sit here and tell me I don't have pride in the community.
I just said, taking pride in my community, I didn't like it.
All right, okay, all right, all right, but we're talking about uh pay rate, so.
So, um, it's. So, I'll, I agree with you, but I, in theory,
Mm-hmm.
but I'd still say stick to minimum wage instead of saying twelve, because if we don't get to it right away, a minimum goes up to thirteen in January, there's still gonna be at twelve, so
Okay. Fine, yeah, yeah.
do it at minimum and then we'll we'll readdress that.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, fine.
Make a motion to adjourn this, sir, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointments and reappointments, Charles Sullivan, very happily, I would um entertain a motion to make you the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, I'll make that motion.
Something you do know, it's over here.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
All right, you're, Charlie, uh, you gonna second that? All in favor? Aye.
I'll make that motion.
Second, yeah.
Aye.
Okay, Ed Walsh as temporary highway worker effective uh September fourth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, um, I'll make the motion that we hire him. We're going to have to have a little discussion on the uh rate of pay there. Um, I would make the motion that we pay him the rate, and I I believe we're not gonna have any issue with funding it because the openings, uh the rate of pay that he was uh paid in June. Okay. Um, so he could come back with the rate of pay that he might.
That's with his stipend on top of that?
No, no, he he's not getting a stipend.
You, he, but he was getting the early retirement pay in June, see, if you wanted to have a step five, right?
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Right, so, yeah, okay, that would be it, no step, it would be a step five, right? Okay.
All right, I just have a couple of questions, how long is this gonna be for?
Um, ninety days, I believe, correct, David?
I believe so, yes.
Um, also, um, the last time he worked, there was a job description and
Yes, um.
he did not have his hoisting license, is that, like, would that be part of the criteria?
Well.
That's what he reasons why it's a temporary highway worker.
Yeah.
He retired as a laborer, laborers are not required to have any license.
Yeah. Of course, he didn't have that.
Okay, and he, he does have his driver's license, correct? Okay.
Yes, right. Okay, so I'll make that motion.
For ninety days?
Yes.
At the step five?
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Rihanna Brew, a signal operator, part-time, effective two days ago.
Uh, um. Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a, any public comment that? Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, someone, someone dumped a bunch of trash behind like Borges garage, behind the old third garage, somebody threw it there, uh, he saw it.
Uh. Yeah, okay.
We wanted to go pick it up.
Okay, um, which which side, which, as you're heading towards Rich, Rich Hill Road, which side?
From, the back. If you're heading down from high street, kinda right inside, but behind Borges, it's in the front.
Right. Okay, okay, all right, we'll see what we can do there. All right, um.
I do, I have one.
Oh, okay.
It's on Richmond?
If I wanna find out how many bids have gone out under the Massachusetts State Law, but I'd uh
I got it.
I have a right to find out how many bids have gone out, how many contracts have been given, and how many bids they received back within a a year or two years, and I'm talking every department, highway department, police department, every department, for any contract job, I wanna see how many bids have gone out and how many have come back and who they're looking at.
The, you can, that that's a freedom of information, I reclose.
I know, it does, I'm asking, how do I go about it?
Well, you'd have to file a letter with the town clerk specifying exactly what kind of information that you're looking at. Uh it's also important to keep in mind that uh when you say bid, uh certain thresholds in terms of dollar amounts, change the type of bid that it is, uh under a certain amount of money, it's a sound business practice. Under uh uh ten thousand, I believe to fifty thousand, it's just getting three quotes, and after fifty thousand dollars, it requires a more formal bid procedure such as an RFP or an IFP. So it would depend upon the type of information that you're requesting. Uh for example, if you're asking about a three thousand dollar bid that, you know, it could be one vendor.
Or it could be a thirty thousand dollar bid, and one contract gets the job.
Thirty thousand, you'd be required, you'll be required to get three bids, you'd have to document the bids.
Right, and one contract gets the job, 'cause I have to call the state, and then go, all right, only one person.
Mm.
So, yes, now I'd like to have a list.
Well, you n- well, you need to specifically identify which bids that you're interested in coming up.
Mostly it's probably the streets, the highways, um the police, um.
Yeah, the, we're, you know, the town is a very large, the
Fire, um, I'd say more of the highway department, more of the building.
It's a very large business, you know, we do bids all the time for different, you know, things that we purchase, so.
But I understand that you have to have three bids.
Depending upon the type of material, whether it's a construction project versus a, a supply in material kind of thing, a supply in services, I should say.
Right. Right.
Uh it it it, the structure of the bid and the bid required depends upon uh how it's defined, uh what they call it, uh uh thirty B, which is the state protection act.
Okay, that would be through the town clerk, correct?
Yeah, you can file it through the town clerk, you, you can't make it an omnibus blanket request
Yeah.
Yes.
because the amount of time that would be required to track down all that information, the town would be required to charge you for the town, the time to research that, to make the copies and to forward them on to you. So it all depends on how extensive, you have one bid, you have a question about, it's not gonna be so much.
No, no, I I already know.
If you're talking about every bid in town, then you're talking about, you know, putting a person to work for weeks, looking at bids and pulling out and making copies and documenting and all of those processes that are involved in providing you with the information that you're requesting. So there would be a cost associated with that.
'Cause it doesn't cost to have a time, to have an investigative conduct, or.
That, whatever, like I said, that, you know, that, that's, I don't know who's investigating, but, you know, that's I don't know specifically what you're referencing, but.
Bids?
Well, there are a lot of bids, you know, that's.
All right, uh.
Mr. Solomon, Mr. Chairman.
Wait. Yes.
One thing to possibly address the ladies' concern about the cemetery. Um, if someone were to stop on the side of the road and park their car off the road, so it wasn't impeding traffic, and readjust or replace some of those rocks, would there, would there be anybody that would call in a trespass
Okay.
on that, in other words, would there, would there be any response from the public who was calling in?
I I can't.
And if there was a call in and the person was not destroying the property, would the police chief enforce, do anything about that call?
In other words, so if she goes by and she wants to fix the wall, and she fixes the wall, and nobody calls, and nobody, it gets done?
Yeah.
To.
And she's happy, she feels good about it, it gets done?
The.
A, A.
The problem solved.
Check the other, uh, 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 the, the, okay.
There's no liability on a town because it's not a permissive, it's not a permissive act.
Hold, hold on, I'll just tell you, all right, the the trespass law in Massachusetts is trespass after notice.
Correct.
Okay, and so there would be the question of who would give the notice, all right, so that's, that cuts it down, right, right, I, I, I point, I point, I point.
There's, there's no notice given, you you won't be trespassed.
Just, just talking back again.
All right, I'm gonna, that can be discussed maybe outside the uh meeting sometime. But we're going to go into executive session uh at this time. And uh first of all, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Paragraph A, Subparagraph four, to discuss strategy regarding security personnel. Um, item number fifteen, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Paragraph A, Subparagraph three, to discuss strategy with with respect to collective bargaining with the public adminis- public employees union, local eleven forty-four of Luna, all bargaining units, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, the chair so declares. And item number sixteen, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Paragraph A, Section, uh, Subparagraph three, to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining with the public employee union, local eleven forty-four Luna highway department unit, um, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so de- so declares. Uh, the chair so declares, uh, I'll also notify you, the board will return to open session following the executive sessions to vote on uh the memorandum of understanding between the public employees union and the town. Uh just, we'll just come back for official vote in open session. So if you wanna hang around and see that, you can, but don't need to. Um, all right, I will accept a motion on entering into executive session. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Grunewald?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. entertain a motion to uh re-enter uh public session.
Second, um, motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, all right.
Aye.
Uh, all right, and then I'll entertain a motion to um deal with the mem- memorandum of understanding between the town of Free Town and the highway unit um as discussed in uh oh, executive session.
Make a motion to approve um with the uh changes of um heavy equipment operator and truck driver.
Mechanic.
Mechanic. Not at full-time.
Full-time.
Okay, right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, go ahead, George.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that?
Do you want to, or do you wanna stay?
I'm in favor of adjourned.
Second.
But I don't get a motion.
Motion made and uh seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.